Good evening, everyone. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please? Second? All in favor? Please stand for the pledge. Good evening, everyone. It's March 21st, our March Board of Education meeting for the Mahopac Central School District. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Tona at this time for a presentation.
Thank you, Vice President Savino. So, welcome, everyone. Happy Spring. So, our first presentation this evening, we have Bernadette Lingardo, Jeanette Canelio, and Gary Ziegelhofer, and some students here to share with us the WISE Club at the high school.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. WISE is a program that we're really proud of, so we love the opportunity to share it with all of you. So, we start with a little bit of a video that is in our course of studies that we present to the students when they're choosing their WISE courses for the coming school year. About a minute long, so I just want to share that with you. Jay Zai designed this with the course of studies. We guys are fond of it, so I hope you enjoy it. So, we wanted to take the opportunity to present the program to you because we're really proud of it. And through the slides that we have put together, it just sort of demonstrates the mentality and the philosophy of the program. So, I found this statement, and this is kind of the WISE line, so if you take a minute to kind of take a peek at that, you'll get a sense of what our goals are in the program, and what we hope to do, and what we hope the students will challenge themselves with. So, I know many people are familiar with WISE, but there are some people who are not familiar with WISE, and some people in the room have had their students, their children, do WISE. So, basically, the WISE experience, in a nutshell, fosters independence, challenges test quo, and it increases accountability. And it's a really great program for our seniors to kind of stretch their arms a little bit and learn something more than they would have learned otherwise. So, when we talk about the program, we talk about... We talk about the program, we talk about what WISE does. And so, we put this slide together just to kind of get a handle on showing you in a nutshell what WISE can do for students: providing hands-on learning, teaching time-management skills, pushing boundaries, challenging students in a positive way, making sure that they are committed and enthusiastic about their senior year, about, you know, the education that they're receiving. And then, one of the great things is WISE benefits everyone: the teachers, the mentors, the staff, anybody who comes in contact with the students while this process is going on. In our program in the high school, and I know Gary will talk about this as well, we have ranged from 65 students to 110 students in our highest capacity, over a 20-plus-year career, teaching-wise, in the high school to our seniors. It's a great program that was brought in by a former principal and former business teacher here, Bob Charo and Eddie Hat, and it's something that we've kind of cultivated for the last 20-plus years, improving, tweaking, really kind of making as fine-tuned a program as we possibly could to guarantee our students had the best options for their senior year. And we are affiliated with WISE Services, which is the program that began this whole thing in Woodlands in the '70s. A great man named Vic Leviathan started this whole thing as a teacher in 1974 in Woodlands High School in Westchester County, and it just kind of grew and grew and grew. So, WISE, the name, has changed multiple times. It was Woodlands Individualized Senior Experience, then it was Westchester Individualized Senior Experience, and by the time, it branched out of Westchester into Putnam, into Dutchess, and out of state, to California and Rhode Island and Massachusetts and even Alaska. Depending where WISE students had gone to work, WISE kind of grew out of those places. So, we are a large interconnected web of family members all over the place, which is kind of cool, because when a student joins WISE, they sort of sign on to become a part of a family of people they never know when they might meet. So, it's kind of cool that you could go for a job interview and talk about WISE, and somebody knows someone who participated in the WISE program. You can go to work or have a job interview, and someone knows someone who participated in the WISE program. So, that is a kind of cool thing about the program.
So, what WISE is built around is that in the state of New York, we're mandated that English and Social Studies, History, Senior Year are required. So, the first half of the year, the kids take an intensive English and Social Studies program, allowing them the second semester or second half of the year to be freed up to leave our building and explore an internship that they will adapt over the first half of the year. So, in the beginning of the year, they put together an outline of things they may want to try, then they go from that to a job list and/or locations they're interested in. They literally do a resume, and they go out into the community and start looking for those placements. Some placements, we start as early as May and June of the year prior, because in the medical field, it's a very tough environment, because there are lots of schools down in Westchester and other parts of the state that are also doing this program. So, their kids are also trying for the same internships our children are. So, I say that because we meet with the parents usually in May to discuss that, so that parents are aware of what's coming, right? But educationally, our kids are put through probably what would be harder than if they just stayed in school and did their classes, because they're doing as much education the first half of the year, and then doubling it down the second half of the year with their internship notes, logs, journals, and a presentation that's got to be 40 minutes or longer at the end of it all, representing their experience: everything they've done, what they learned, and what they took away from it. And that piece in itself is a huge daunting task for any young adult to try to take on as they're maneuvering through their own self-acknowledgement, but also to a community of educators in front of them that are listening to them as they do this. And that, if you understand, is what is a real growth spot for our children, because not only did they go out and learn something, then now they have to explain their learning to others and really acknowledge how it impacted them.
There's a large reflection piece in WISE and a large communication piece in WISE. Gary mentioned that we talk to the parents at the end of junior year to get them ready, their students, ready for the fall, and it's important, because when we do that, we're opening the lines of communication. Their students might be going home and talking to them about the program. We want to make sure that the parents are fully aware of what the program is, what they might be in store for, how exciting it might be for them, and what restrictions parents might have. We want them in on the conversation, so that, you know, your student doesn't go home one day and say, "Yeah, I'm going to do an internship in Manhattan, and I'm going to take the train every day," and you're not really prepared for them to come home and say that. So, the conversation is important, communication is important, reflection is important. So, our juniors have already started the application process now, reflecting on what they might want to learn, what kind of students they are, what their strengths and weaknesses are, and what they might need going forward to be a part of the program. So, again, it's a cyclical program that continues to grow and continues to nurture itself by connecting with students in the program now and students who are getting ready to begin the program in the fall. So, this is just a little snapshot of what to expect, and our students this year will be doing their presentation starting around Memorial Day-ish, and, you know, you're all welcome to come and join them. I'm sure these guys are so excited that I just said that. But if you'd like to come and celebrate or see, sit in on any of the presentations, we would love to have you come in and visit our students and see all the great work that they've done, especially by the time they're doing their 40-minute presentation. They do get a little nervous about that, but by the time they're ready, you can't stop them from talking about what they've done, so it's a good thing. Do you want to... We have a couple of students that were kind enough to fit us into their busy schedule tonight, so if you don't mind, we're going to have them stand up, and they'll just introduce themselves to you and just kind of tell you a little bit about what they're doing, and then we'll wrap up the presentation.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emma Diomita. I'm currently a senior at Maipac High School. I chose the WISE internship because around my sophomore year, my boyfriend's older sister actually did the WISE program, and she would, she'd be like, "Oh, I just saw these amazing things, you know, I'm having so much fun." And ever since then, I was just like, "Yep, that's what I want to do." So, you know, when junior year came around and they started sending out the applications, I had my heart set on WISE, basically. So, when I was about the end of my senior, junior year, I was kind of going back and forth between majors, which I think a lot of my peers are, and I think that we're all kind of in the same boat with that. So, I was like, "You know what? I wanted to do something in the healthcare field, so let's start looking." So, my mom is Vice President of Westchester Medical for the nursing, so I was immediately like, "Hey, Mom, help me with this, like, let's come up with a plan." So, I'm talking to her, we're looking around, and I find that Westchester Medical actually offers a senior experience, which is similar to WISE. So, I started reaching out in October, and I didn't really get, like, an email back until December. So, it's definitely a very long process, but it was, it's very, very worth it. So, right now, I'm currently in the postpartum department at Westchester Medical Center, and I'm about to be into the Labor and Delivery Unit, starting quarter four. I've helped babies, I help mom with all their, you know, new classrooms. It's amazing, I get to follow nurses around. It's honestly like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it helped me narrow down exactly when I wanted to be, which was a nurse, which helped me, you know, kind of pick my school, rep Sacred Heart. Like, but yeah, I mean, I am so grateful for WISE. The English really, you know, refined all my skills for all my journals that I'm doing. I do, what's it called? I take notes during my internship. I write, come with like a little journal, and I'm like this, like following the nurses, like writing down everything I can. But yeah, you know, I've been exposed to so much, and it's really made me reflect, which I think is a huge part of WISE. You know, it kind of like puts into perspective that there's a world outside of Maipac. You know, like, this isn't it. Like, there is so much out there, and that you can make like a change in someone's life, even by just doing the internship. So, I'm very grateful that WISE was the perfect choice for me.
Hi, I'm Jonathan. I'm a WISE student, and for my WISE experience, I'm interning at the Examiner News, and I'm writing sports articles for them. And so far, it's been really great, I love it. So, what I want to do when I'm older, I want to become a sports broadcaster and reporter. And so far, I've loved the experience. And so, what I do for the winter sports, I covered hockey. I'll go to the games, I'll just sit down, take notes throughout the game, and then I'll interview players afterwards. And then, when I got home, I would write an article up. And so far, like I said, I've loved it. I've gained a lot of experience, and I want to continue doing it. And I'm thankful for the WISE program to give me experience for that and help me for the future.
So, on the slides, these last couple of slides I put together, I just wanted to highlight, and you can see if you've been looking up there, you can kind of see what I highlighted about the type of students who choose WISE. There's no limit to what students can choose the program. You don't have to be, there's no regulation to be a straight A student. You could love cars, as one of our students did, get an internship at Park Ford, and then get straight As in Delhi, when you never thought you'd end up in college. You can, you know, you can create your own educational program after your experience with our own Maipac teachers, because you saw the passion that they had, and they instilled that in you, and you wanted to make a change in the world. You could become an orthopedic surgeon. You can pretty much do so many different things, and so many of our students have gone into education. Again, this is just a little bit of a snapshot of some of our students in the past who have chosen to do film and education, and worked with the Carmel PD, and worked in teaching, and filmmaking, and graphic design, and medicine. So, it's just a kind of little snapshot of some of our kids. And then, this is some of the accomplishments. We've had students, again, who have made presentations at the Goddard Center. They did a project here with Bob Conick. We have another student who we had, she fell in love with her special education class and was treated like a teacher in the room. As you can see, we've had students who have chosen to do projects. One of our students scored multiple films for an NYU film student's movies. He also conducted the band, taught them a song, and conducted it here. He was our valedictorian. So, there's to show you that, you know, WISE has no limits to who wants to be on board with it, and you kind of can take a look at all the things that they have done. This is just some messages from our alumni. I highlighted some of the, you know, stronger points that they wanted to make about what WISE has done for them: getting a research position, or giving them clarity about what they wanted to do, or changing their focus midway, because they realized what they were doing for their internship gave them insight into what they did or did not want to do. And that's huge. And then, sorry, one last thing I just heard from one of our former students, because we have a network of students, we keep in touch with them, we don't lose sight of them. I had, when Facebook started, I made an alumni page, and people would support each other, the students would support each other. If anybody needed anything, the alumni would come back and they would help out, or they would communicate with me and communicate with others. We still keep in touch. Most of our teachers and mentors still keep in touch with their former WISE students as far back as, you know, early 2000s. So, it's kind of cool. And one in particular just finished her residency as a pediatrician and just moved back to Philly to work at the Children's Hospital there. And she's like, "I'm so excited to share my WISE experience with all of you. Thank you for asking." So, she has learned so much over the years. One of the things I didn't want to be remiss in talking about was the generosity of our community members. Our community members have so generously given their time and their experience to our students. They have shared their knowledge, they have shared their office space, they've shared their classrooms, they've shared everything with them. I just threw some names out here, because these are the people that have continuously supported the kids in the program. And it runs the gamut, from, you know, typical business offices, to educational classrooms, to different settings, to the Carmel PD, to the Putnam County Sheriff's Department. You can see, I highlighted some of the names. This is just a small smattering of people who have helped, but without them, our program would not have been as consistent as it is, and we thank them very much for all of their support. They're still doing it right now. Some of our kids are probably still there at their locations. So, just to wrap up, this is my last slide, talking about, you know, what WISE has done for our students. You know, they've gotten to college, they've gotten scholarships, they've gotten jobs, they've gotten jobs in their senior year of high school from their WISE internships. They've developed bonds in the community that, you know, will last a lifetime. They have learned and been empowered to do things, as Emma said, that to know now that they can go out and change the world, they can do something good, take Maipac out into a broader community, and, you know, and speak volumes to what we're all about. So, I just want to say thank you to the audience, thank you to the board for letting us talk about it, because I could talk all night about this, as you can tell, and I'm going to stop talking now, and Gary's going to get the hook.
So, I'd just like to do two things. I'd like to just say to the community that's watching us and on the web, that WISE is an amazing connection from state to state, nationwide. It's all over the place, it's not just Westchester or Putnam. And the reason I say that is because when we talked about connections, we had a student many years ago that swore she was going to be a teacher. She went into the classroom, and after her internship, did a whole presentation about how she decided not to be a teacher and became a psychologist. And right before COVID, emailed me about her being down in Florida and starting her master's in psychology, and that she was going to be interning, a student that was going to be looking into education as a WISE intern, right? Like, so she was now giving back, right? And so, I say that because the amazing connection that we say is that community loves to give back, and this community gives a lot. And this program has been really adopted by this community and the school district, and it's continuing to grow, and it's had its ups and downs, right? As far as with COVID and post-COVID. But I say that in a positive way, because we're seeing now the numbers come back, now that COVID's gone, and we're re-establishing ourselves in the classroom. But sadly, after 20 years of organizing and helping coordinate this program, Ms. Lingardo will be retiring at the end of the year. And I want to give that note out to the community, because as people watch, they know her, because her passion and her drive to keep this program ever-growing and ever-larger, her network of people that we can always rely on when an internship's needed, or her ability just to make a phone call or adapt an old student of hers to take a student in, has helped us greatly grow and adapt for our students in every need and area. And so, I say that to us, because I would like to just say thank you to her on behalf of all the students and teachers that have worked with her over the years on this program. It's been a joy and a pleasure to work with. Thank you again for allowing us this time, and have a good evening.
So, thank you all for presenting tonight, our students and our staff members. What a gem the WISE program is in our district. And I was able to see firsthand some of our interns in the community while they were doing their internship, and have a conversation, and very impressive. And just as you saw our two seniors this evening present to us so eloquently, this program prepares our students to go out into the world. And just like everyone said, it's hard to know when you're 18 what you want to be for the rest of your life. So, this gives an opportunity to try it out, and if it's something that sticks, that you really like, that's terrific, you've got a head start on a future career that you'll love, and it's also great if you figure out what you might not want to do, because that also gives you a head start on your major decision as you go into college or into the workforce. So, thank you all for presenting, and Mrs. Lingardo, you will certainly be missed. We hope you come back and visit us and visit the WISE program. We probably won't be able to keep you away. So, thank you all.
Okay, so, moving on, it's time for the budget presentation. So, I'll turn it.
All right. Thank you. So, tonight, we have our third budget presentation. We're going to be looking at some more of our departments in the district. We have some staff members that will be sharing, as well as some staff members that will be stepping in for other staff members this evening. Who has the slide advanced? So, in the budget development process, here we are, highlighted, you see March. So, like I mentioned, we're looking at some department budget presentations. The next slide shows the budget priorities that I've shared with the board early in the process. Highlighted tonight is that we're going to look at the continuation of the district's bus replacement schedule. And so, at this point, Leonor Volpe, our supervisor of transportation, couldn't make it this evening, so our interim assistant superintendent for business, Christina Howell, will be stepping in and presenting the transportation budget.
You have the magic touch. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin. Thank you, Ms. Tona, and I hope I can do as good a job as Ms. Volpe did the other day, but tonight, I'm going to go through some of the highlights of transportation. Our district operates a fleet of 102 vehicles. Last year, our fleet traveled over 1,700 miles, serving the needs of our students. That included 90 field trips to date. At last count, there's about 40 more upcoming for the school year, so obviously, it's an enormous part of our program, and it supports all of our field trips, certainly transportation to and from school. Included in that, Ms. Volpe reported that she accommodates, she provides for over 500 requests for alternate transportation stops. So, that includes daycare and work passes. So, if our students have work responsibilities within the district, she transports them to and from, which is a huge help, obviously, for, you know, students who are maybe 16 years old and can't drive. So, she does that within the boundaries of the district. And this year, she commented at the work session about how we've had an increase in our McKenney-Vento student needs. McKenney-Vento is when a student is displaced from their home for some reason, they become homeless, they have the right to attend their district of origin, which might be Maipac, or if they get placed in another district, they can attend that district. This year, we've had more students and families request to continue to attend Maipac schools, and that transportation has taken her down to Yonkers and Peekskill, and I believe there's a 50-mile radius, and based on the McKenney-Vento regulations, they're entitled to that, because a lot of times, due to McKenney-Vento, it's a temporary situation, and as soon as it can be returned to district, they are, or if they find permanent housing somewhere else, then their transportation and their enrollment would begin in another district. Thank you. So, the picture of the bus lift is a sample for this slide. It's not actually our bus lift, but the pictures on the bottom half of this slide do represent our bus lift and part of the discussion about why we need another one. Because we service all of our own fleet, that includes the buses, that includes the buildings and grounds, vehicles, and equipment, we do that in our own garage, and the lift that we have in the garage, we actually have two lifts, we were notified that they were no longer serviceable, and they would not pass New York State inspection. So, in the current budget, we have a lift that was approved in the 2022-23 budget. We're requesting a second lift, because there's two lifts in the garage. The cost of that is $210,000, but actually, that represents only a $26,000 increase for the 23-24 budget. And of course, those increases are due to supply chain challenges that we're all experiencing. The other request that Ms. Volpe has made is for a morning dispatcher. That would be a second dispatcher in the bus garage. That way, someone would come in early and be able to take all the calls that come in actually before school starts, and that would give us a good continuum for before, during, and after the school days, all the times that our buses are in transit. So, there's many times that buses are out late for sports runs or field trips, and having two dispatchers would give us a continuity of services, so that there's always somebody in the bus garage who can take those calls, can reroute buses if they have to, and that would be at a cost of $67,100. Part of the conversation tonight is about continuing the bus replacement plan. This slide represents our current fleet. As you can see from the slide, we have 11 buses that are more than 16 years old. We'll talk about the column furthest left, number of buses, the number of buses in each age category as listed, the current percentage, and the column- And the column all the way over to the right that says recommended percentage is best practices. So as you can see, there's 11 that are more than 16. There are 20 buses that are between 11 and 15 years, 28 buses between 6 and 10 years, 43 buses between 1 and 5 years. And if you see on the right column, the recommendation is to only have 1% of your fleet that's over 16 years and then even spread between 1 to 15 years. So the average lifespan of a bus should be about 15 years if they're well taken care of. Thank you. We started the disposal and bus replacement plan in the 2018-19 school year. This slide represents the number of buses that we've disposed of and replaced based on the replacement plan. Originally, this was a 10-year plan. But as you can see during the COVID years, we did not, well, actually during the 21-20 school year, we did not replace any. But because we didn't replace them at the same rate, we've extended it from 10 years to 12 years so that we could continue the replacement plan. This year, we have requested nine buses. We've gotten all but one of them. As you can see by the farthest right column, again, the net gain and loss based on the number of buses that we've disposed of that were out of useful life or would not have passed inspection, we're actually down four buses. So we're hoping to make that up over the course of the rest of the years of the replacement plan. We will be asking the board to consider and the community to consider a separate proposition to continue that bus replacement plan for eight 65-passenger buses with air conditioning. Each of those buses cost $160,607 for a total of $1,284,856. To date, we've replaced 40 buses. Each of our buses have an, by the time we replace the buses, they have an average of 80,000 miles on them. Some of them have as much as 130,000 miles on it. But based on the average, it's about 80,000 miles and they're 10-plus years of age. So because we have such a good bus garage and mechanics team, they keep the buses in very good shape. We've been able to extend the life expectancy of lots of those buses. So, you know, we're not replacing buses until they have really served their purpose and beyond their useful life. And by doing that, you know, we're trying to be very responsible with taxpayer salaries. The purpose for the air conditioning in the buses is again, you know, you've all seen the weather changes. You know that September has been much warmer. We have sports runs that, you know, there's excessive heat. Some of our sports trips start in mid-August. We also transport our own students to the prom. And there are lots of field trips that happen at the end of the year. So having the air conditioning means that we don't have to go out and rent those big charter buses. We can accommodate those runs ourselves. And as Ms. Volpe said when she was here, you know, it's much nicer for the students who are all decked out on prom to get on a bus with air conditioning. So it's really, you know, this phase, it's not a luxury. It's almost a necessity to have buses with air conditioning. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Howell. So our interim director of special education, Karen Gatto, she couldn't be with us this evening. So I'm going to present the special education information. So first we see a special education snapshot. And this is the information for each of our schools. You can see by building the number of students with individualized education plans, IEPs, as well as our special education staff, the programs offered, the number of support staff in each building and the number of teaching assistants and aides in each building. So just taking a quick look at the programs offered. So at Fulmer Road, we have integrated co-teaching as well as a special class at the 12-12 level, Resource Room and the Wilson Reading Program. At Lakeview, we have integrated co-teaching and two different-sized special classes as well as Resource Room and Wilson Reading. Austin Road, again, integrated co-teaching as well as two different-sized special classes. Then we move into the middle school, integrated co-teaching, a 12-12, Resource Room, Wilson Reading and some tutorials. And at the high school, integrated co-teaching, a 12-12 self-contained and Resource Room. So we have 737 students with IEPs spread out amongst our five schools. Then continuing, looking at the programs that we have within the district, we have the Falls Academy, which houses 20 middle-school-aged students, seven of whom are Mahopac residents. And the other 13 come from other school districts where we receive revenue in the form of tuition. Then we have a program at the high school, the High School Academy, which currently has 38 students enrolled, 30 of whom are Mahopac students, and eight are tuitioned in from other public schools. We also have 57 students in out-of-district placements. So of those placements, 28 are at a BOSI's placement. Five of those students are scheduled to graduate in June of this year. 22 students attend private special school placements and seven attend other public school placements. And then we have 100 preschool students who receive services from a variety of providers. So this school year, we're proud of our full continuum of services that are provided from Resource Room to special classes. As I mentioned, the special programs at the high school and the middle school as well as a variety of accommodations and resources and supports for our students and their families. The staff, the special education staff received crisis prevention intervention training this year, CPI training. We've come to make the special ed department more centralized, bringing all of our special ed administrators and their clerical staffs over to the Falls School so that they have one central location. And then from that central location, they're able to meet and communicate and then move into the buildings to provide support. The Foundation's reading program has been put in place as well as the Practical Assessment Exploration System Lab at the middle school. We just are hiring, we've already hired a special education chair to assist our secondary special education meetings, committing on special education. And we're in the process of hiring our secondary special education administrator. We had an individual that left us mid-year and we've been going through the hiring process. And that selection should be going before the board within the next month. Looking ahead to the 23-24 school year, we're looking to enhance that full continuum of services. And that means we're looking to add another self-contained special class at the elementary level. We're also looking to add content area special class at the high school. Currently, we offer two content areas at the high school special class. We're looking to add additional content there so that we can meet the needs of the individual students more efficiently. We're looking to hire a board-certified behavior analyst, a BCBA, and hire our elementary chair to chair CSC meetings as well as an assistant director. And that position was shared at a previous meeting about the new structure of the special education department. And we're looking to hire a transition counselor through our federal grant. And that individual will assist our oldest special education students with connecting with the services that they need as they move from our schools into outside of our schools, whether they're turning 18 or 21. There's a lot of services out there to help support them in their independence and job skills. And so we're hopeful that we can find someone that can help us bridge that gap for those students. And we are projected to return about five students to district from out-of-district placements. So that does allow us to keep those, our students within our district. So that is definitely a goal of ours. A lot of these changes that we've been making or look to make, some of them will be in the makings for next year and others will be in future years. So it's a conversation that's ongoing. And I'm very excited about the restructuring of the special education department to provide the support for our students, their families and our staff. So looking at the special education department budget, you can see in the second column, the current spending for the 22-23 budget. And then the third column, the 23-24 projected budget. So the contractual is going down a little bit because we're looking to replace with some district hires, like we mentioned, the BCBA person. But that contractual amount is not going to zero. We'll still be contracting with different vendors to provide services to our students and families as needed. The BOSI's tuition line is going up quite a bit. And when we look at the current school year, we realize that the budget did not include an accurate expenditure amount. So we were looking at our actual expenditures this year. And that $3,26,742 is actually over $4 million. So we recognize that that was under-budgeted for 22-23. So in 23-24, it looks like a much bigger jump. But it really is reflective of the current expenses this year plus a percentage increase from BOSI's that we get from them on an annual basis. Then you can see private tuition costs and public tuition costs with modest increases, traveling conferences dues, salaries for CSC-related expenses and materials and supplies are being budgeted at the same amount as 22-23. So overall, that increase in the special education budget from year to year is due to the BOSI's tuition costs and making sure that we're planning the correct amount for the 23-24 school year. Any questions from the board on special education? Okay, now I'd like to welcome Michael Trombley, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and professional learning. And he'll talk about that budget as well as the technology budget.
Thank you, Ms. Tona. Good evening, Board of Education members and the community watching in public here at the high school. I'm pleased to present our curriculum instruction and professional learning as well as our technology budget for the 2023-2024 school year as proposed. I always view a school budget as a, not just a balanced statement of costs and revenue, but of our beliefs. And it's a statement of what we believe in education and what we'd like to support through programs and through the staffing that supports that program. And thanks to the community budget approval of our 22-23 school budget, we were able to add or expand the following programs that you see here. Starting in 2019, we implemented the Teacher College Readers-Writers Workshop approach to literacy instruction. And that has brought cohesion and alignment to the way that we teach our youngsters from their kindergarten year all the way up through eighth grade, eventually in terms of literacy, ensuring that every student, whether they be at Austin, whether they be at Lakeview or whether they be at Fulmer, has a similar cohesive literacy education experience. This year, we've implemented the Reveal Math program for our K-8 grades. That is a program that we brought on last year because the previous program went end-of-life, end-of-support from the publisher. So we had to, we had to make a change. We brought together a diverse stakeholder group to choose the new program. And that program is the backbone, but more so supported by our locally-developed spoken sequence for math, particularly K-5, that our teachers have developed and reflects our pedagogical beliefs of how we should instruct mathematics. Additionally, we've expanded our Project Lead the Way sequence of engineering at the high school and implemented last year the Gateway Program, which is the middle-school version of Project Lead the Way for our middle grades. We're continuing to provide rigorous secondary coursework and elective offerings such as the WISE program that you saw earlier this evening. And we're also continuing to expand PLTW as we speak and other physics-based and engineering-based classes in alignment with the building's vision of what they want to see our graduates leave in terms of the profile of their education. Each year since 2019, we put together to further enhance this, the highlighting the student outcomes, the programmatic experiences and the accolades that our students receive that are supported by our programs and our teachers, we've put together an infographic over the past couple of years to articulate that. I'm not going to go through it in detail here, but just know that it is in print and we will have it at future board meetings and at future events just to highlight some of the items that are in there. And I want to thank this year for their work on this program. I want to thank our high school administration, in particular, Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Erin Kleinman, our director of guidance, Ms. Jennifer Deagle, who coordinated some of the work with our printer and graphic designer, and Mr. Steven Luciana and our art and math department, sorry, our art and music chairs, Ms. Heather Palewick and Ms., excuse me, I'm sorry. Our art department chair would be, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. So I apologize for that. So they all contributed to the data that went into this infographic that highlights over 51 extracurricular activities, 3,927 college credits gained by the class of 2022. So some pretty impressive data that you'll have the chance to see. And you also see some of the varied and exceptional post-secondary acceptances into colleges and universities that the class of 2022 had, thanks in part because of the support of the community in terms of our budget. So that will be shared with you in greater detail at a later time. In terms of what we're requesting to add in the 2023-2024 proposed budget, we are asking to continue to expand in accordance with the plan that was put in place years ago, our readers-writers workshop up to the seventh grade. And we will also, just to project out farther, in the 2024-2025 proposed budget, we will look to complete that rollout with the eighth-grade addition to ensure that we have a cohesive and aligned literacy program from K to eighth grade. We will be looking, because we do have a capital project that is providing updated and renovated library media centers. In particular, under construction right now, we see Austin and Fulmer Road having active construction that we anticipate being completed by the start of the 2023-2024 school year to support those spaces and also our students in attaining library sciences and also information literacy expectations. We are looking to add a library media specialist to be split between those two buildings with an anticipation, once Lakeview is updated as well, possibly revisiting, adding an additional elementary library media specialist. We have wonderful, talented and dedicated library aides who provide access to library materials and push into classrooms. But we're looking to enhance that with a certified library media specialist to bring their expertise in terms of developing and delivering lessons of information literacy and library sciences. We also, in the vein of continuous improvement, which you've seen throughout our budget presentations, whether it be programs looking to improve efficiencies, whether it be looking to expand programs to better meet the needs of our students or the expectation of those programs, we continuously look at what we are currently offering and how we're structured to support those offerings. And in the realm of supporting instructional methodologies and deliveries, we're looking to redesign in this budget our instructional coaches and our building technology leader positions. And most of the costs associated with that are budget-neutral or have no budget cost in general. But we do present this as part of the proposed budget to demonstrate that our budget is not just a balance sheet. It is how we support our programs. And so looking at that proposed redesign, on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see that we currently have, each building's provided with support through the building technology leader who in essence provides initial-level technology support, initial-level technology integration. In other words, how do we integrate some of the technology tools we have to support instruction? And also support of district technology-based initiatives. For instance, if we find that our server space is running, not this would ever happen, but we're running out of server space, we coordinate how we may clean that up. And the building technology leaders would assist our teachers in that initiative so that they don't have to do it all on their own and they can focus on classroom instruction. So each building currently has a building technology leader, including one district-level building technology leader who supports district-level initiatives, whether it be updates of web page, updates of newsletters, those items. We also have a K-5 literacy coach that splits their time between the three elementary buildings, a K-5 STEAM coach who supports, I'm sorry, divides her time between the three elementary buildings, and a K-5 math coach. And their primary roles are to support the teachers within the particular discipline or content area in best-practice instruction of pedagogy approaches and also with perhaps co-teaching, co-planning. co-teaching, co-planning, curriculum support in terms of development. And we've seen that we've been able to provide our teachers with higher levels of support and ensuring that we can make sure that we're implementing best practices through those coaching positions. We also have two educational technology specialists. Their role is primarily to help teachers integrate and infuse technology tools in an appropriate manner. So whether that be through co-teaching, co-planning, demonstration of best practices, those two positions exist, one at the elementary and one at the secondary level. The proposed 2023-2024 configuration will see one STEAM/EdTech specialist in each building at our elementary levels. That's to ensure that each of those students and teachers have increased access to that coaching model. But additionally, we also have new computer science standards that New York State is expecting us to implement by 2024. So we want to make sure that rather than adding an additional task onto our teacher's plate, we can have those positions available to support and dedicated one per building. We're accomplishing that by collapsing the three stipend positions for the building-level BTLs at those elementary positions. We're also looking to add an additional K-5 literacy coach, supporting our belief that we know that our students in K-3 are learning to read, and then beyond the third grade, they're reading to learn. So really placing an emphasis on support for our teachers as they provide literacy-based instruction. And we would look to keep our 6-12 educational technology specialists, and we would also look to keep our middle school, high school and district-wide BTL. Additionally, our current approach to supporting literacy also involves consultant-based services through the Gravity Goldberg Group. Through our K-6 program this year, each grade level split 81 days of services from that consultant. We would look to add that second literacy coach, in part by reducing some of the reliance on that consultant service and shifting it to where we see more of a need for supports. Our K-6, I'm sorry, K-5 grade levels have received support from Gravity's consultants since 2019. So we're looking to supplement their professional learning through the literacy coach, which also will be here every day, rather than just a certain number of days throughout the year. We would still rely on Gravity's team for 22 days of consultant-based services for those new grade levels that we brought on in the recent past of our sixth and seventh grade. In addition, you can see that we would not look to fund a math coach. We would supplement our math professional learning through a BOSI-based consultant for 20 days at the K-5 level. The benefit, and we also use, we also receive Gravity Goldberg services through BOSI's. And the benefit of that is we receive some state aid the following year, and if BOSI's does have a surplus at the end of the year for their overall budget, based upon the participation rate of each district, we could see a refund to the general fund of the year. But we don't necessarily plan on that, but that's just an added benefit. Our budget-to-budget comparison in terms of the major codes that make up our budget in terms of our offices' areas of oversight, we see a slight increase in our curriculum and development supervision code, and that's primarily due to an increase in BOSI services. We plan for BOSI services to increase about 2% each year. We do receive more detailed financial data throughout our budget development because they're developing their budget as well. And we always view BOSI's as a value partner, but also a vendor. If we can receive a service from a different source and it's more financially beneficial to us, we would also look at that. But we do see a slight increase in some of our contractual-based services for professional development there. Our in-service training code, our 2070 code, will have a slight decrease due to reducing some BOSI services found in that area and also reducing some contractual professional in-service training as well. Our BOSI central data processing code is a technology-based code that supports our student information system in the campus. It supports some of our server-based hosting for web-based and database services. It also provides us with state reporting services. We see an increase in there primarily due to the increase in what it costs for server-based hosting. That's a cost that is passed on to us by our provider, BOSI's. And as we have more server space being used and as server space becomes more of a premium, they do increase their rates a little bit. And then we see our 2630, which is the bulk of our, which is the code that provides us with the bulk of our technology-based services, whether it be web-based applications, software, or our technology support staff. We do see a slight decrease in that because we look to find some cost efficiencies, particularly in terms of BOSI's contractual services. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Curriculum Instruction Professional Learning and Technology Budget this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trombley. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Trombley? All right. So this next slide, we've looked at before. This is our projected 23-24 state aid. So it's broken down by different categories. So you can see our current state aid budget in the second column, then the governor's projected budget for 23-24, and what we're looking at is our projected budget based on what we know about actual expenses. So if you look all the way down at the bottom, the total aid, less the pre-K money that the state does provide in the state aid run, we're looking at $37,076,643, which is a slight increase of $2,782,717 increase. That's not really slight. It's almost $3 million increase over the current year in state aid. So this next slide, Ms. Howe has shown previously on how the tax levy allowable limit is determined. So the entire formula is there that we've reviewed in the past, but at the very bottom, you can see that the tax levy allowable limit is at 3.71% for the 23-24 school year. So then on the next slide, everything that we've shared so far in all of our budget presentations, which included the input of all of our administrators, our building administrators who'll be presenting at the April meeting, we have a proposed budget of $137,960,937, which is a budget-to-budget increase of 4.15%. The proposed tax levy is $94,816,238, which represents a 2.81% tax levy increase. So that is substantially less than the 3.71% allowable tax levy increase. And that is in dollars, $836,478 less than what we are able to present to the community, but we're not going to go to that highest level. So this budget is a sound budget. It provides for all the opportunities for our students, and it increases opportunities for our students, as we've shared, in special education areas, in curriculum areas, technology areas. We feel that the staffing changes, the restructuring of our administrative team, of our student support teams, STEAM coaches, building technology leaders, all of that will provide more streamlined support to our buildings, to our staff, and ultimately to our students. So I'm very proud to present this budget to the Board of Education for consideration next month when budget adoption occurs. So next steps, April 18th, that regular meeting, we're going to have all of our building administrators here presenting highlights of the school year and what programs that they'll be looking to offer in 23-24, and the board will be considering the entire budget for adoption. May 4th is the annual budget hearing. And then throughout May, until May 16th, the budget vote trustee election, between the budget hearing and May 16th, I'll be visiting different organizations in the community to share the information about the school budget so that everyone can make an informed decision on May 16th. So if anyone will be away on May 16th, this slide walks you through what you need to do to obtain an absentee ballot. And then also, as part of the budget vote on May 16th, it is the annual trustee election. So there are three seats available this year. So the process has already occurred for those that are interested in picking up a petition. So you have until April 17th to return your petition if you're interested in running for the board. Any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you so much for the, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Oh, here we go. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Some things that came to mind, which we've talked about on numerous occasions, was I know our next slides are going to have more information. I just want to make sure that enrollment and levy histories are going to be included with that.
Yes, we've already started to work on the presentation for April for the budget adoption. That information will be part of the public hearing, and that'll be comprehensive information that pulls information from each of the presentations so far, as well as summary information for the next meeting in April.
So thank you for the presentations on the budget. I know it's a lot of numbers being thrown out, slides being seen over and over again. It's a lot to digest. If you go to the district's website, drop down the Board of Education to the District Clerks page, there is budget information, 23-24 budget information, along with all the committee reports and so on and so forth, is an outstanding resource. If you miss anything or you want to go over it, rehash it and take a look for yourself so you have the information in front of you when it comes time to vote in May. So moving on, we have comments on agenda items, so I would like to call up Marie Frankel.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent and Board. So I wanted to talk about the, can I talk all about the budget stuff that just happened or no? Is that not allowed? Excuse me? Okay. So one of the things that concerned me originally was the 24.7% increase in the special ed budget. And I guess it's even more concerning that we were off almost $1 million in our BOSI's numbers last year. Like, I'm not sure that's like 33%. I don't know how we could be off that much. So that's pretty disturbing. And I don't know what happens to that shortage or that has to come into this year. I know that fund accounting is different from anything I've ever seen, so where does that go? Does it go into this year? Where does that $1 million go?
We attempt to absorb it all within the current budget. So as you know, that there is, with any budget that anyone has, you don't spend all of your money to the dollar. So there's always some money that's unspent. Part of that goes towards our fund balance and to be part of the revenue to present to the next year's budget. Ms. Howe, would you like to add to that?
We also want to add that budget freeze in December. So all of this spending was broken. There are some times that show that we have unanticipated and anticipated. So there's driving concerns on that money for some of those individuals. We have to freeze as early as December to accommodate for somebody.
Okay. So we can't have a budget freeze for next year instead of like a 4.15% increase?
We definitely implement a budget freeze every year to make sure that we have enough eligibility that's really every year.
I would politely ask that if you can read your statement.
Okay, so, yes, so the next thing is about the letter. I guess my other thing is about the letter that's there that, I guess they want the parents or something to send to our representatives. That's in the, your consent.
That'll be discussed, that'll be discussed later.
Okay, so you'll just, so I can't discuss it on the, so you're going to go through it and you're going to...
You can make your statements.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, so that they're going to advise, you know, because you're telling, you're asking, you know, people to commit to this. I just want to make sure you're going to go over all the attributes related to all these things, because I have no idea what the, you know, the $250 million limit for certain spending, how it could be used. The same thing with the health insurance reserve. I have no idea what that is. I think wanting to have free lunches, I mean, yeah, I guess it's great, but, you know, the saying is never any free lunches. So, because I think for people that are in need, I think there is federal programs to provide them with free lunches. And since our lunch program is so profitable, maybe we could just charge a little bit less for lunches, and that would sort of accomplish the same thing. The electric bus issue, I think, is a real problem. I don't know whether we should be buying electric buses now. If we're going to continue on this 12-year program, I guess we're going to have a bond of $1.3 million every year. Is that what's anticipated? Because that's the only way you can buy nine buses a year. So, but I'm concerned because I don't think there is the actual charging capacity, available electric infrastructure, and associated costs before we start purchasing electric buses. And I'm also afraid that, you know, it will become a mandate and New York State will threaten to take away our aid again unless we comply. So I'm very concerned about that electric. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frankel. And is nobody else correct, Ma? So we're getting down to the board business for this evening. Can I please get a motion to accept the treasurer's report for January 2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I please get a motion to accept the warrants for January 2023?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion, please, for the, to accept the revenue reports for January 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the budget transfers for January 2023.
Followed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the claims order report for January 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to accept the work session minutes of February 14th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the regular minutes of February 16th, 2023.
Followed.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? And finally, a motion to accept, a motion to accept the special meeting minutes of February 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I will turn it back over to our Superintendent, Ms. Tona, for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a quick capital project update, as was previously mentioned by Mr. Trombley. The Austin Road and Fulmer Road libraries, they're progressing nicely, and we anticipate having substantial completion within the next few weeks. And the work will continue during the spring break, and there's quite a bit of work scheduled for that week. And we will be inviting our architect and construction manager to the May board meeting to provide a thorough update on where we stand with the capital project. Safety concerns, procedures of the district, as student safety is absolutely our top priority, I just wanted the community to know that we do have many discussions and reviews of our systems and protocols throughout the school year. We partner with our school resource officers to review systems. We work with Putnam Northwest Chester BOSI's. They have a safety individual that is a tremendous support to us. So we definitely review all of our procedures to make sure that everything we do is the best that we can do to promote safety and security in the district. The capital project and the Smart Schools bond will allow us to have double-secured vestibules at each of our buildings. They exist currently in some locations. The other locations will have them by the summer, which will allow us to keep our buildings even more secure. And we'll also have card swipe access at our buildings, and that will allow staff members the ability to enter certain doors at certain times using their card swipe access so that we can keep doors locked. We're also installing door ajar systems, so if a door is left open for a few minutes longer than it should be, or a few seconds longer than it should be, there'll be an alert that our security and administrative personnel can go and make sure that the buildings are secure. So we're looking forward to those enhancements to the safety and security of the district. And also, proactively, to re... And also, proactively to reinforce the dangers of misuse of social media, we are planning to bring in a presenter for our students in grades four through 12 in mid-April to discuss the dangers of social media and if it's misused. So, more information will be shared with the community soon about that. On a positive, very happy note, our middle school production of Beauty and the Beast is this weekend. So, Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00 p.m., and Sunday at 7:00 p.m. So, if you're looking for a wonderful way to support our students and get some entertainment at the same time, please stop by the middle school this weekend. Congratulations to our coach, Tim Donahue, who was named a Section 1 Coach of the Year for Ice Hockey. Also, as our winter season is complete, at the April meeting, we'll be recognizing and honoring our student athletes who have substantial achievements under their belt for the winter season. And the spring season is underway and hopefully it remains spring. And our students can continue to use our outside facilities. They're scrimmaging now and in the next week or so, we'll be, we'll be having games outside. So, hopefully the weather stays nice and warm so that we can all be outside and cheer on our students. And finally, tonight, the Board of Education will vote to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Deborah Legato. So, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to work with Mrs. Legato during my first year in Mahopac. Her knowledge and support have been so invaluable. On behalf of the entire Mahopac Central School District, we are appreciative of your service to our students, staff, and community. Congratulations on your upcoming retirement. And I am very happy that you will be with us for the remainder of this school year. And we know where to find you and we have a question. So, thank you so much and congratulations, Deborah.
Thank you, Superintendent Tona. We now have our board, our committee reports. I'll start with the HR Committee. The committee met on March 7th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. President O'Callaghan, myself, President Dululo, Trustee Masafra and Martinez, Assistant Superintendent Legato, and Superintendent Tona. We discussed the, tonight's HR agenda, future pending tenure candidates, which is, was a lengthy list, recent appointments, resignations, and leave requests. As I mentioned earlier, we adjourned at 8:00 p.m. I will move on to the advocacy minutes. Trustee McCracken could not be here tonight, so I will read his statement. He could not, due to work, he could not make it. So, he does apologize. The advocacy committee met on Thursday, March 9th, 7:15 p.m. at the Fall School PD Room. President, President O'Callaghan, Superintendent Tona, Trustee McCracken, the Chair, President Dululo, and the community, the community committee members. The advocacy committee suggestion box submissions were reviewed and priorities for the New York State budget were discussed. Thanks to Superintendent Tona's input and thoughtful deliberation from members of the committee, a budget board letter was created, a resident template, and a resident phone script. These are all on tonight's agenda. If approved by the board, they'll be placed on the advocacy committee page, which is under the Board of Education tab on the district's website. Any resident can use these resources to advocate for the needs of our district and our kids. The priorities Mahopac is advocating for in this year's state budget is such. A postponement of the mandate to implement electric busing. Eliminate limitations on the $250 million high-impact tutoring, one-year set-aside foundation aid. State funding for school resource officers to support school and student safety. Legal allowance for school districts to establish a health insurance reserve and free lunches for students. We encourage residents, we encourage all residents to get involved and send letters, email, and call our state legislators using the resources the district is, the district is excited and proud to provide to you. Respectfully submitted, Trustee Tanner McCracken. And that is all we have for advocacy. Next up, we have facilities. Trustee Faro?
Yes, so facilities also met on the, on the 7th of March, about, I think it was like 4:30 in that, in that area. We adjourned around 6:00 at the meeting where myself, Trustee Martin, Martinez, and Savino, as well as our facilities director, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Tona, and Ms. Howe. Most of the meeting we spent really discussing kind of how the capital project was going in general. We did see, give you some great pictures of Austin Road. We're excited to hopefully get out there in, in April meeting and take a look at how we're going and, and hopefully we can finish this thing up this year, get through the rest of our, our, our capital improvements. And all, we met for about an hour and a half or so.
Thank you, Mr. Faro. Next, we have Senior Trustee Masafra with our Finance Committee Report.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met on March 9th and in attendance was myself, Superintendent Christine Tona, Assistant Superintendent Christine Howe, Board President Ben Dululo, and Adam Savino. My PC just died and I don't know my... Sorry, I don't know what I'm doing wrong.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. They just blew it, yeah. Where are they posted on? The committee reports?
Sorry about that, a little chuckle there. So, some of the things we discussed on March 9th was, we discussed the purchase order process and payments for ordering food and for district staff meetings. We also reviewed some warrants that were paid to the Town Hallmark, the Town Sheriff's Department. We discussed and reviewed the presentation that was given this evening. We reviewed the tax authority rate and recommendations and we discussed revisiting the tax authority. We also discussed to review the budget via an interactive Excel spreadsheet and we talked about discussing that at our next work session, which is still to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Technology. It's great when it works and it doesn't.
Yep, it doesn't work.
That's it. So, with that, as mentioned in the advocacy minutes, I have three resolutions, which I will now read. Upon recommendation of the ad hoc advocacy committee, the Mahopac Central School District Board of Education hereby approves the New York State Budget Advocacy Letter and authorized, authorizes district clerk to send on, to send on behalf of the Board of Education and place same on advocacy webpage of the MCSD website. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the resident phone script and letter. Upon recommendation of the ad hoc advocacy committee, the Board of Education of the Mahopac Central School District hereby approves the Resident New York State Budget Letter and Resident New York State Budget Phone Script and authorizes district clerk to place on the ad hoc advocacy webpage. Can I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the information is on, will be on, posted on the advocacy webpage, on the advocacy committee webpage, as well as what I just read. Finally, we have settlement, I'm sorry, one more. I skipped a line.
No, settlement agreement.
It's a settlement, okay, about that. All right. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves the terms of a disciplinary settlement agreement between employee, an employee and the Mahopac Central School District and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is a MOA. We resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Mahopac Central School District and the United School Workers of Mahopac Union regarding agreement with employee and employee. And a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to turn it over quick to Senior Trustee Masafra for a, to read a donation.
Resolve the Board of Education hereby accept the grant of $2,477.78 from the Fund for Excellence in Education Fund of the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley to support the artistic puppets Make History at Austin Road Elementary.
Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. We've all heard the guidelines before. Respectful, try and keep the three minute, time, three-minute time limit allotted for individual public comments. Address the president of the board, conduct yourself in a civil manner. Fee language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Personal attacks or criticisms of any person connected with the district will not be permitted. So, with that, I will refer to District Clerk LaRaca. Do we have resident comments?
Yes, Ava Van Norwick.
Ava, can you please come up?
So, good evening to the Board of Education and community members. My name is Ava Van Norwick and today I'm here to discuss the idea of book banning that has surrounded our community since late last year. I've been to a lot of board meetings and I've even spoken at a few, but the one issue that has always caught my attention has been the questioning of reading material within our district. While I can understand from a parental perspective the want to protect children from what may seem like vulgar and violent content, which is rightfully so, banning or restricting access to books available to all students in our school libraries is not the way to go about this issue. Today, I want to start by thanking the Board of Education, my teachers, and the librarians at the high school, Ms. Berkowitz and Ms. Fabaro, for their commitment to furthering student education through literature, especially with texts that have been controversial from one point in time. From putting together committees to thoughtfully review books and having constant commitment to keeping diverse texts in our district, I know I wouldn't be here speaking today without educators like these who ensure students like me their right to read. As many community members have mentioned, literature should not only be a mirror to reflect our own experiences, but a door that opens our minds to the experiences of others. Books like The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison and All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson are just two books, like many, that tell the stories of experiences we don't typically get to hear about in Mahopac. I've been able to read books like The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas and Looking for Alaska by John Green and gained so many new perspectives on topics important to our world today, from mental health to equality. I've had the honor of listening to authors like Ibram X. Kendi and Nick Stone speak about their books Stamped and Dear Martin that changed the way I go about thinking and dealing with complex topics that I've barely been exposed to within Mahopac. The six books I just mentioned have been or are being reviewed by our school board based on snippets of text pointed out by those who have completely missed the purpose and benefit of these novels. I've heard snippets of Sarah J. Maas romance novels read aloud in this auditorium to straight lists of curse words used in various books that have a much more complex meaning. What I feel to be missing from these comments is the value that these books have provided for me that allowed me to be the confident young woman I am, which would be taken away from students who may need these novels even more than I do to find out more about themselves if they don't remain within our school district. For a diverse community, all students need to have a diverse reading material. That means no restrictions based on age suggestions or content. As reading has always remained near and dear to my heart, it has become more and more important to so many others realizing it could be, it could be restricted in our schools. Because of that, both myself and all the other officers that are a part of senior and executive student government at Mahopac High School wrote a letter to the Board of Education expressing our student perspective, as well as created an online petition to garner support for this issue we feel is so important in our community. As of today, 3/21, 450 students, teachers, friends, family, and community members have signed this petition with the same goal in mind of keeping all literature available within our district. An overwhelming number of people commented on our petition. Alumni, students, parents, all voiced their opinions. The consensus being that reading is crucial to understanding representation, equality, empathy, and is essential to freedom. I can imagine many in this room feel the same way. So, I wanted to come and speak tonight on behalf of the MHS Student Government, my friends, my family, and all 450 of those people that signed our petition, dedicated to making sure a diverse, a diverse student education perseveres. On behalf of many students in our district, I implore the board to take into consideration the student and community perspective when it comes time in May to make a final decision on books being reviewed. And I urge our community to do the same when thinking about a book they may feel unfamiliar or uncomfortable with. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ava. Okay, so that concludes our meeting for tonight. I have one more.
Maxine.
Oh, there's all, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. Maxine, could you please come up?
Good evening to the board and I really want to thank you for your time. My name is Maxine Van Norwick. I'm a junior and amongst other things, I really enjoy literature. I've been enjoying the works of Charles Dickens, Joan Didion, Maya Angelou, and so many other greats since I learned how to read. Books have shaped who I am today and have led me on a very successful path in life. Animal Farm by George Orwell showed me that ordinary individuals have the power to create change and the dangers of an abuse of power. Looking for Alaska by John Green showed me how teens can cope with grief, loss, and ever-growing expectations. The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas showed me life from a new perspective and to fight for what you believe in. These books shape me and my beliefs and I wouldn't be who I am today without them. Yet, as the board is aware, these are the ones being banned in our district. Books such as the aforementioned are actively being banned around the country. Important messages and lessons in these books are being overlooked because of prejudice surrounding their content. The majority of prose being banned does not discuss the lives of heterosexual, cis white people, but of marginalized communities. Books about our differences, our most important quality, are being ousted. By banning books with new perspectives on different people and their ways of life, we are not preventing our children from seeing these people. Banning All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson does not prevent a child from learning about transgender people and exploring gender themselves. It simply delays it. Our world is so connected that there is no way a child can grow up without being exposed to people that differ from the quote-unquote norm. Just because someone doesn't look like you does not mean they don't deserve to be seen. I've learned about different communities and their experiences in these books. I've become more empathetic when I learn about the history of marginalized people in these books. I've learned more about myself and who I identify as in these books. Banning literature simply because of a disapproval of a minority shows, is, it completely disregards the point of reading. Literature is about the meaning, the lesson, and the knowledge you gain to carry you further into life. If The Hate U Give had gotten banned, countless kids would not experience the story of fighting for what is right and the institutions that fight against the people they're supposed to help every day. When Animal Farm was banned more than 50 years ago, children simply complied with abuses of authority and never learned they had a voice. If Looking for Alaska gets banned, people will fail to understand that being themselves is okay and that getting the help you need is not a bad thing. To the board, when making these decisions on the books, I ask that you think of those who will be reading them. If parents choose to stop their child from reading books, that is up to them. But the ideas of one should not determine the fate of the many. Our students deserve the chance to read about others and experience different walks of life. Thank you so much for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. And thank you for, for getting up and speaking. I know it's difficult. It's wonderful to see our students be able to come up and present so eloquently, such a hot... a hot topic. Now, do we have anybody else before I jump ahead?
No.
Okay. So, one last thing I'd like to mention. One of the changes we made recently was our, where to locate our policies. Quick tutorial. We talk a lot about policies at the meetings. Easiest way to get to them now, they're located in Board Docs from the homepage for the district. Click on Board of Education, scroll down to Board Docs, enter Public Site, and on the top right, you'll see a dropdown for policies, and they're all listed there numerically, and you can search them, search for them that way. Easy way to find them, reference them. Sometimes we mention policy numbers. If you're not familiar with it, this is, this is the place to find them. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for coming, and have a great night. We'll see you next month.